Director of Content and Programming at the Press Enterprise Company. We would like to thank the candidates for participating today. We would like to thank the audience here in attendance. We would like to thank the audience online on PE.com as well. We would also like to thank our sponsors for this inaugural initiative, not only the Press Enterprise, but also the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District, which was our host for Monday's forums in Beaumont, and the Mount San Jacinto College, which is our host today and tomorrow in Menifee and also Wednesday in San Jacinto. We are conducting six forums today. All are focused on city council races here in southwestern Riverside County. This forum is on the Canyon Lake race. We will conclude our road trip here in Menifee tomorrow with three more forums. All of these forums are being streamed live on PE.com and Ustream.tv. These forums also will be available for viewing on demand on PE.com, on the road trip page, on the politics area of the website. We have simple rules today for this forum. Each candidate has two minutes to make an opening statement. We will also have questions and each candidate will be able to answer every question and have one minute to do so. And now I would like to turn this over to our moderator, Dr. Stacy Searle-Chapin, who is a political science professor here on the Menifee campus of Mount San Jacinto College. Stacy?
Thank you, and thank you to the Press Enterprise for hosting this great event. This is our second forum of the day and we are focusing on the city of Canyon Lake, which is one of the most unique cities in the region. It's a private gated community, but it has more than 11,000 residents and is a popular recreation spot. The city's origins date to 1968 when development began in the area, and it was incorporated in 1990. So let's take a moment to meet the candidates. We have Mary Creighton, an incumbent. Oh, do you want to applaud? Yeah, okay. We have Randy Bonner, who is retired. We have Richard Beck, an attorney and farmer. And we have John Zeitz, who is also retired. So let's move to our first question. The first question is for challengers. Oh, opening statements, sorry. Opening statements, let's start with Mary.
Okay, first I would like to thank Press Enter-- oh, thank you. I would like to thank the Press Enterprise for sponsoring this event. A little bit about my background, for those of you that don't know me, I'm an RN, I have a master's degree. I spent most of my career at LA County USC Medical Center. I started there teaching in the School of Nursing and then rose to be one of the top executives in the medical center. I also had my own consulting business for a while and worked for an international consulting firm. Moved to Canyon Lake in 1996, and that was the best move ever made. I love Canyon Lake, it's a wonderful community and the people are terrific. Throughout my career, I've been president of several organizations, most notably the American Association of Neuroscience Nurses and quite a few others. During my-- I am the incumbent and during my last eight years on the council, I have many, many accomplishments. And one of them I'll just mention is fairly recent, is that all those of you who, not only in Canyon Lake, but live in western Riverside County, have a decrease in your electric rates. We brought them-- I initiated this project, it was carried out by WRCOG. I initiated this project and it brought us more in line in western Riverside County with the desert temperatures than it was when we were affiliated with the ocean communities. I am also a member of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, I've been there for many years, and I serve on several boards and commissions in the region and in the state. I am running because we have a fairly new council and I'm the one that has the experience and the knowledge of what has been going on for so many years. I have many, many contacts, I know people, which helps bring things to the city, and I just love what I'm doing and I want to continue to do it and help our city.
Thank you, Mary. Let's go now to Randy Bonner.
Well, thank you for everyone attending, thank you for the Press Enterprise for conducting this type of environment. I think it's going to be very healthy for all of us. I moved here in 1996, I've been 14 years with Canyon Lake, I love it, it's a great place to live. In my world, before retirement, I was on a parallel career. I was in the computer disk drive industry, having primarily responsibilities of profit and loss P&amp;L responsibility and sales responsibility. And then in parallel, I had a career with the Marine Corps and retired in 1994 as a colonel. Well, I feel that there's one thing that's very important, and that's the officials, people are in official positions, need to have certain things that will not compromise for any reason. For things like integrity, for things like honesty, things like trustworthy, things like respect, and most important, no conflict of interest. We've had some problem in the past where we can't even have a vote at the city because one or two people have to recuse because of other investments. So we have to have a full council all the time. My platform is a very-- the first and primary is financial accountability. There's a buzzword called fiscal responsibility. Financial accountability is different. Financial accountability, know the numbers and know how they're being applied and what can be done differently. And it takes someone that really understands numbers. Water conservation, conservation, I think is probably pretty obvious. Public safety, we have some challenges there and I think we have some ideas, some solutions. Business development, we certainly do have to grow the business in the community. We don't have a lot of room to do it, but there's some areas, different ways within Canyon Lake to do that. And cooperative coalition and transparency. I guess I only have 10 seconds, let's-- I just want to know that I had a lot of leadership in my whole career, from the military, from the church, the recent past treasurer and president of the Properties and Owners Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go now to Richard Beck.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I want to tell you, I am really excited about this opportunity in this point in my life. I'm running for Canyon Lake City Council because I care about the community, I'm excited about the community. I've been here since 1969. I have spent most of my adult life in business in the community. I started as a contractor and built many houses in Canyon Lake. I've been practicing law with my wife since 1996 in Canyon Lake. I've been involved in a number of activities throughout the community. In the 80s, I worked on the Show Cause Committee of the POA. I've worked with youth groups, I've worked with the youth court program in Lake Elsinore. My wife and I also are scoring judges for the mock trial program in Riverside County that has programs in all the high schools. I'm the past president and still on the Board of Directors of the Southwest Chapter of the Riverside County Bar Association. I've been the president and on the Board of Directors of the Canyon Lake Merchants Association for approximately 10 years, which is the organization of property owners in the town center in Canyon Lake. I've also had experience in, through my education and training, I've got accounting, economics, obviously the practice of law. One of the things that the city council does is the city council writes law, enacts law, enforces law, and I think that the experience I can bring will help. I've also got public service experience. I've spent five years working in building and planning departments. It's another area that I think that I can help the city look at some efficiencies, some of the duplication with the POA and inspection of homes and things like that. So I think that there's a number of areas we can fix there, and then we've got the budget deficit. It's huge, and we're going to have to tackle that. I think I can bring that to the council, the fact that we can all work together, sit down, solve the problems. We've always been able to do that in the city of Canyon Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Zeitz.
Thank you, Stacy, and the Press Enterprise. In the past two years, the city may-- in the last two years, the city may overspend their income by $1,533,000. The city knew that in 2010 that there was an additional $300,000 being charged for fire services. There is an anticipation that the city could lose another $1 million next year. With a $5 million surplus, there is the possibility that the city could go bankrupt and may need to disincorporate. Now in financial trouble, the city is discussing a tax on having the-- or having the POA pay the fire service costs. Here's what I would do and have done. I have contacted Western Riverside Council of Government and the supervisor Jeff Stone that what we need is their support for Canyon Lake and all of western Riverside County. We need to have a fire, a JPA, and not use the California Fire Services. We should not renegotiate the contract, but continue on a month-to-month basis with Cal Fire. Then we need to work with the other cities. WRCOG, the supervisor, establishing the Western Riverside Fire JPA. This would enable Canyon Lake and all of the other cities and county to break away from the Cal Fire area and the union contracts and the excessive retirement programs. The county owns the equipment and the training center at Clark Base. This can amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings for us and all the others joining the JPA. Thinking outside the box, now can save, not just for now, but for our future and that of our children. Having served as second vice president in Western Riverside Council of Government in the past, I know I can help lead this process for us and the other cities and county. In my time on the POA board, six years on the board, eight years on the city council, two as mayor, I have had the privilege of being a part of what has made Canyon Lake great. I did it once before and I would like to do and have the opportunity to do it again. I will stand up for you and the rights and right this ship. I will bring back the leadership that will get us back on the road to our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we can get to questions. There are two seats available on the council. Martin Gibson is not running and Mary Creighton is the incumbent. The first question is for challengers, and some of you already touched on this in your opening statement, but I'll ask again. Why are you running? And let's start with John Zeitz.
Always good to start with a Z, isn't it? Why am I running? Well, I have had eight years on the council. I don't like the direction that the council is going. I don't like the fact that the council has taken away property rights, free speech rights away from the individuals, and has been critical with the businesses within the community. We do not need business constraints at this time. We need the city to work with the businesses. We need the city to work with the people. I am also the vice president of the Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce and seeing firsthand how the city is an obstruction to the businesses within the community in many different ways. And we need to right that part of that ship. And I want to be there because I've been there for eight years. We had a great relationship in the past two years. I think it's dwindled and we need to get back, as I said, to where we were. Canyon Lake is known as a little bit of paradise and we've lost that little tinge, but we can get back there. We just need to be there and I think I can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go next to Randy Bonner.
Well, that's why we have different candidates. I have a different attitude. I think the Canyon Lake is in great shape. We have a problem. We have the whole nation, we have a problem. But this community is beautiful with a lot of amenities that work very well. If you look at the current council, in two years, year to year, over that period, they've reduced expenses by 29 percent. We have a city manager now working four days, but we're actually working five, but we're paying for four days. Where the credit cards that got used unfortunately in the wrong reasons have been eliminated. We continue to make decisions, they're going in the right direction. We have the biggest issue has to do with this fire, and we're talking about this correlation, cooperation, correlation. That means communities between Temecula, Marietta, Wilmar, Lake Elsinore, and Canyon Lake are going to work together, are talking, and we can find a solution that we can make it work. But this is a beautiful city and it's going the right direction.
Thank you. Now let's hear from Richard Beck.
Thank you. Initially, I decided to run because I felt that the majority of the city council made a gift of public funds for a private purpose when they reimbursed a council member almost $5,000 in attorney's fees. That also caused me, though, to think about what it is that I love about Canyon Lake, what have we lost and what do we need to get back there? And throughout this campaign, I've made an effort each week to communicate with the community on those areas that I feel that the city can improve on. I think Canyon Lake is a great place, but it can be better, and we need to tackle this deficit right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go now to the incumbent, Mary Creighton. Why are you running for reelection?
Well, I mentioned it just briefly in my introduction, that I'm running because we have a new city council, new members, and I'm the one that has the experience and I have the knowledge of what's going on, not only in the city, but I have wide contacts throughout the state, the community, the county, the state, and the national government, which I can use to bring things to Canyon Lake. And more importantly, I'm able to help individual people within the city of Canyon Lake with certain problems that they have. When I first ran, eight years ago, I said I was running to make a difference, while I still am. I'm still trying to work and make a difference and improve the quality of life of the people in Canyon Lake. Mr. Zeitz mentioned the JPA, something for the fire, well, that's already been in the works. We formed several months ago a coalition of all the cities in southwest county, and this was one of the items that we're about to come up with the next meeting. We've talked about it before. I want to-- we have a problem with our revenue, and I'm finished.
Thank you. What is the most pressing issue facing the city in the next 12 months, and how would you address it? Let's start with Richard Beck.
Biggest issue right now is the deficit. At the rate that we're spending the reserves down, I think that we may be out of money within another three years or so. So that has to be tackled immediately and not wait until the next budget cycle. The biggest part, the biggest expense is public safety between police and fire. It's approximately 75 percent of the budget. One of the areas that we need to look at is with fire and paramedic services. Do we look at privatizing paramedic services, as some cities have done? Do we keep it the way it is? How about staffing of the fire stations? There's a lot of issues that need to be looked at, and we need some experts that are involved in these areas to come in with their ideas, and we need to set down and tackle it. There's also a good chunk of money being spent within the city manager's office and building development services. I think we can-- there's some duplicative services that we can save money on with the POA. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go next to Mary Creighton.
Okay, well, everybody says it and everybody knows it. We have a revenue problem. The city council budget has been decreased and decreased the expenditures constantly. For the last several years, it's been down, it's down about 39 percent. But we have to do this, and the fire is where our major problem is. Our expenditures keep going up. It's not the expenditures with the council or the business of the city, but it's the expenditures with the police and the fire. And we need to find a solution to that problem. Very well aware of that. We also have issues with foreclosures in the community. We just recently hired a code enforcement officer, and in fact, one building, one house that had been deteriorating for several years and nothing was happening, just pulled their papers to rehab that house. I am-- and the other thing is the civility. We need to deal with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from John Zeitz.
Thank you. Obviously, the budget is what I talked about earlier and what the major issue is. Total budget for the city, we have a city manager that I hired a few years ago, and she worked three days a week, and now she went to full-time for a reason and then never went back. I think we need to cut wherever we can, and she should go back to three days a week. We do need to do the fire JPA, not just with southwest Riverside County. This is a global issue. It applies to everybody in every city. I've talked to people in northern California, and this is the way they are going. I've talked to a friend of mine, whose name is Tom Tisdale. He was the fire chief in Riverside County before our current chief Hawkins. He will work together on this project to reduce the costs. We need to eliminate some of the obstructions that the fire service has right now through the union contracts, and we can do that if we have our own JPA. We can reduce the 3 percent retirement to 2 percent retirement. We can do a lot of things. We also need to do some work, and two years ago, or three years ago, wanted to get more water into our lake, and so we have more water to use in the future.
Thank you. And Randy Bonner.
Well, this is one answer that's going to be unanimous, the primary concern we have here, the top priority. Two years ago, I became the treasurer of the Property Owners Association, POA if I use it, okay, in the foreword. The first year, but we were under $350,000 under budget. The second year, I was the president, and we were under over $250,000, $600,000. Now, with the POA, the budget's about 13 million versus the city is 3 billion, so I'm not going to be as simple. But how to get to numbers and dress is a real issue. Now, one person doesn't do it. Sometimes there's confusion. It takes the board to do it, but it takes a leadership that is focusing on the right issues and making sure that we make attention. Two years ago, we increased the monthly assessment for $5. This year, it was flat. So we're doing the right things. And then on the public safety, I think I've already hit on that, and we need to get this coalition going and do things smarter and different, but the better service, the same service or better than we already have today.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is, due to declining tax revenues and state support for cities, cities are now called upon to make cuts to balance their budgets. What cuts would you make? And let's start with Mary Creighton.
As I previously said, we already made many, many cuts in our budget. It's difficult. We have two full-time employees. We have one policeman around the clock. Where do you make the cut? We do have a community policing officer that could be cut, and I'm really loathe to do that because he has his fingers on the pulse of the city and what is happening in there rather than the people that come periodically and service the city. There is not a lot of places to cut in our budget. We've already done that. We need to find sources of revenue, and that's where we are.
Did you have a chance to finish? Yeah, okay. Let's go to John Zeitz.
We are a small city, and it is difficult to make major cuts. People are talking about the fact that there's been a reduction over the past few years. Well, when I was on the council, we put money into reserves every year. We built a $5 million reserve that's now being drained. Are there areas that can be cut that exist today? I think so. I don't think we need a corporal in the police department that is serving basically no specific purpose. We have other booking fees and other fees that we're being charged that can be renegotiated. The fire service, I've talked about, I don't know if you want to hear about it a third time, but there are things that we can do in that area. And reduce the city manager back to three days a week. She went to five days a week because at that period of time, Scott's not here anymore, that we were looking into expanding the city's boundaries and taking in Audie Murphy Ranch and going north to Meadowbrook and getting more commercial area. None of that worked out, and even competing with the city of Menifee, so that Menifee would have a choice to be in the city of Canyon Lake or in the city of Menifee. And that didn't work out. We need to look for more income, and that's going to be difficult, but we can still make small cuts, and we need to cut everywhere we can.
Thank you. Randy Bonner.
This is obviously a tough question, and it's going to take a lot of hard work to get into the numbers like I'm used to getting numbers into when I do become a council member. There's other changes that one also didn't get mentioned between Mary and myself, they changed the enforcement team. And we were able to reduce the rate that we're paying them by 30 percent. That's pretty drastic, and we had people lined up wanting out those jobs. So we're working on this issue. We go back and back with this public safety, the fire station, and the how we use the paramedic people, along with the fire engine, to go to the same place. Sometimes I see two or three fire trucks, an ambulance, and a couple of police cars, and it has nothing to do with a crime or nothing has to do with a car accident. So we just have to do things smarter.
Thank you. And Richard Beck.
Thank you. As far as cuts, one of the things I brought up is that another 25 percent of the budget is not related to public safety at all. It's city managers, city attorney, development services, things like that. I spent time working, one of my public sector jobs was in a small city in Alaska, and a lot of those services were combined because it was a small city. So in that particular city, I was a planning director and the building official, did the building inspections, did a lot of day-to-day things, including some of the maintenance items. I think in the city of Canyon Lake, we can look at cutting back the city manager's office. I think we can look at making other changes in other contract services that we have. Maybe we can combine some of those services with the POA or with adjacent cities. As far as the fire, I think that we're going to have to look at other areas we can cut there. Just recently, Cal Fire reached a new contract with Riverside County that is supposed to have some savings. We haven't seen what those savings are yet, but I think going through that fire services budget, we can find some money there. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, before we go to the next question, if we haven't done so already, let's take a minute to make sure our cell phones are silenced. I know my students all know the rules, so I know theirs are nice and quiet, so. Okay, a follow-up question to that would be then, what cuts would you decline to make? And let's start with John Zeitz.
Well, there are obvious things that you just couldn't, you couldn't just say we're not going to pay for fire. You couldn't say that we're not going to pay for police, or we're not going to pay for a city manager, that it's a matter of perspective. I think we have to adjust to the process. I can't think of anything that I would say that we would fail to make. We just need to be smarter. One of the things with reengineering, I did it for the company I've worked for for the last 15 years, is what do you do and how can you do it better? That's what reengineering was about in the 90s, although it's not a term you use today, but that's what we have to do. What do we do and how can we do it better? We keep the air conditioning on in City Hall 24 hours a day. Why? We can do that better. Small, but that's the thing that we need to think about, is what are we doing and how can we do it better?
Thank you. Let's hear from Randy Bonner.
I can't not think of anything that comes out of my, to my mind, specific on that issue. I mean, I think we've pretty well addressed all the things that we're talking about relative to the budgeting, to the city managers, the budget cuts we've done, the things we've eliminated that's been waste, which we've had. So I don't have anything beyond that.
Thank you. Richard Beck.
Thank you. Certainly as far as not cutting, right now Canyon Lake has had for a number of years one of the lowest crime rates anywhere. I don't want to see a cut in police services. I also don't want to see a cut in fire services. I was one of the owners of two buildings that burned down last year in the Canyon Lake Town Center, so obviously fire services are particularly important. What we need to do, though, is look at can we do some things more efficiently in both of those areas?
Thank you. And Mary Creighton.
I think the question has already been answered by the other candidates. There's not a lot of places to cut. And we certainly wouldn't cut our police and fire, but they can be managed a little bit differently. There are certain things that we can do about fire response. We, 85 percent of our fire calls are medical, and so we need this. But do we need the county standard of numbers of firemen in a station? I think we may be able to get away with less in that area. So there are areas that we can work on. It's, as John said, I agree with John. We have to just do it a little bit smarter. There's not a lot of room there. I've been through this, and I know it's not there.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is, how do you boost economic development in Canyon Lake? Let's start with John Zeitz.
There isn't a lot of area that you can increase economic development within Canyon Lake. Canyon Lake, in the area that the city has a part of, not the Property Owners Association, is very small. The commercial area is very small. There are things, again, they're baby steps, but things that need to be done. There's been a request for proper-- There's been a request for proper signage, and it's been sitting in the city for a long period of time. City last night says, "We're going to be in the process of quickly helping businesses and doing things quickly." Well, it's too bad they couldn't go back and do that quickly. Will that make a tremendous amount of difference? Well, as you may know, sales tax, as it comes in, is 1% that the city will get. To make up $1 million means we have to increase by $100 million. Is that possible? No, it's not possible. Can we make a difference? Baby steps. Yes, we can make a difference. We can do things better. We can do things properly. We can work better with the Chamber of Commerce and not create an adversarial relationship with them. We can work better with the Merchant Owners Association, and we can show that they mean something to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Randy Bonner.
This is a category I really enjoy. There is opportunities there. There's the area called the Far Farman. It's owned by a family. It's at the end of the 17th, also familiar with the golf course, the 17T, that can grow in there. There's an area in the Fairway Estates area that can be developed. There's a possibility of moving some things around at the golf course and opening up the driving range, because quite frankly, the driving range isn't working very well because the big hitters are hitting in the house when they drive, get the, they hit the house at the end of the driveway. But there's another challenge I think we need to do, and that's called the town center. You know, I've lived there 14 years. About the only change we've had in the town center is Peppi's, was the restaurant where we redone. It looks beautiful. We have, unfortunately, for the wrong reasons, we have a new building now where the fire was, but the rest of it is, looks the same. We're going to widen the road. We need the buildings updated, and we have signs when people go by, they see what is inside the town center. You don't see it today.
Thank you. Richard Beck.
Thank you. To boost business in the city of Canyon Lake, it's going to start at the city manager's office, and it's going to have to work down. It's going to have to be of an attitude, "We can help," rather than "You can't do that." I've watched new businesses come into the center. They want to get a business license, and then they're given all kinds of other hoops that they have to jump through. A lot of these businesses really shouldn't be going through those hoops. It's how people are interpreting the law, how they're dealing with the statutes. And again, instead of showing how these things can be accomplished, the city typically is just, "You can't do it." We need to change that attitude. Part of that, I think, comes from the conflict that the city manager at that level seems to have even with the Chamber of Commerce, which is there to boost business. And I believe that if we just change attitudes at City Hall, and if City Hall becomes more helpful, that will help business.
Thank you. And Mary Creighton.
Yes. As has already been stated, small business area. One of the things that the city can't control this, but we have very little tax coming out of our community's town center, because most of the businesses or service are in. I think we have 13 hairdressers in there. These don't produce any taxes for the city. So, it's, we need to change if we can. We can't control, the city can't control that. That's the owners of the businesses that can control it. We need to make it more attractive, as Randy said. When I was elected, when I first ran for city council eight years ago, that was one of my projects. People were very excited about it, a big committee to improve the town center. And just as his parents, not a lot of expense, but just to fix it up and make it nicer. I was told to go away and never come back, basically, by the business owners in the town center. So, we, I hear that we need to be more business-friendly. It's going to happen if I'm re-elected, and if people are having problems. One problem that came up this week, they said, you know, they, "I'm being cut off again." You ask a politician, and we didn't get lots of answers.
Thank you. Okay. Given all the news and the headlines about the city of Bell, what do you think is the appropriate level of compensation for a city council member who must also serve on regional boards and other entities? Let's hear first from Randy Bonner.
You might be surprised, but I don't think the city members need to be paid anything. I mean, $300 a month in the big picture is not very much. So, let's take the 300 and have, help the budget. Every little dollar means a lot. So, I'm very strong that we have people in the city, and we can work and not have to have a salary at all.
Thank you. Let's go next to Richard Beck.
Thank you. I would agree with Mr. Bonner. This is, I think, everybody up here right now that is running for city council is doing it to help the community and for public service. And the, one thing about the city of Canyon Lake is nobody can accuse the city council of making a lot of money. It's been $300 a month since the city incorporated 20 years ago.
Thanks. Let's go now to Mary Creighton.
Canyon Lake is a general law city. The salaries are dictated by the state. And as Richard just said, the city council people have been receiving $300 a month since the city has been incorporated 200, 20 years, 20 years ago. So, our salaries are not out of line. All of this is coming out because of all this activity in Bell. There is, not having salaries for the city council could deter some very worthwhile people, not everybody. Contrary to popular opinion, not everybody in Canyon Lake is very wealthy. And so, it may deter people who can use that income. I'm on a set income. I'm retired. I'm on a set income. I use a lot of my personal money to help the city in other ways, and therefore, we're not overpaid at all. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, John Zeitz.
Yes, Mary said it's restricted by law to $300, and that's what I got for the eight years that I was on there. And I would not like to think that that's how much I was worth, but that may be true. So, it is restricted. Two years ago, two members of the city council, Randy, had suggested that they cut their pay and not give it. The majority of the council, though, voted against that. And everyone does have the right, though, to give it back. And so, that's possible, to do that. I think it's not, the council people aren't overpaid, and whether you give it back, it's a personal choice, and you have the right to do so, or you have the right to keep it. And I don't think it's overpaid. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The lake is the city's most prominent feature, but it faces the threat of contamination from San Jacinto River runoff and infestations of the Quagga Mussel. Did I pronounce that right? I hope so. Is enough being done to protect the water in the lake? And do you have any proposals to protect the lake's water? Let's start with Richard Beck.
Thank you. I think one of the biggest issues that is currently being worked on is the fact that when we have a wet winter, the septic system is overflowing in Quail Valley. And ultimately, what's going to have to happen is the sewage system's going to have to go into Quail Valley to stop that. I know that there is work going on in that direction, and if I was elected on city council, I would make certain that that's a priority as far as the water quality. The Quagga Mussel's right now is being addressed through the association, doing inspections at the, of all boats that go in and out of Canyon Lake, and I think that program's actually working very well.
Thank you. Let's go next to Randy Bonner.
When I was on the board with Property Owners Association, I used to go to the water meetings. There was a city meeting, the water district meeting, and the POA, and I learned a lot about water. I do know that there is an effort going with the eastern, who owns a large of the waters, particularly on the east end of Canyon Lake, that's working on this Quail Valley issue. And what we were told the other day is they're making really good progress. We had an open house for the gentleman, Ben Wick, who's running for the water district, and he was informing us, and he had people from the various water districts there, and they were very encouraging that the progress we're making. And then the other thing that Richard mentioned, we started this Miesel inspection a year ago, and it's gone very, very well. We've had a few cases, but very few cases of that being a problem, but at least we've got it, we're capturing, and we're going to keep it, we're going to keep it out of Canyon Lake.
Thank you. Let's go to Mary Creighton.
The lake is a large issue to maintain the quality of water in the lake, and a lot of work is going into this. And we were talking about budget and money. This is very expensive. We have a lot of unfunded mandates that come down to us from the state and the national government that says we have to do certain testing, we have to, a lot of things that we have to do. And this costs the city a lot of money. There's a lot of money involved in this. That's an expense we can't cut. The, there's a lot, the sewer problem in Quail Valley has been going on. It's been working on for several years, and they are making progress. There are many water committees, different agencies that are involved in trying to keep the water, the water coming down the San Jacinto River to, it comes through the farmland. And when it rains, the river overflows into the farms, and guess who it gets washed into the lake? And yet, environmentalists won't let us clean out the river. Different problems. We're working on that and have been.
Thank you. And John Zeitz.
As stated, Quail Valley's a problem. It is in the city of Menifee, and we should support as much as we can the city of Menifee in that project. But three years ago, I requested something under water bond money. Canyon Lake's surface rights are for recreational purposes, but the rest of the water is used for drinking water purposes. It's a drinking water reservoir, and the water level can change six feet from winter to the end of summer. And what I proposed was that the eastern water district at the 78 and 215, take their highly-treated water, put it into the San Jacinto River on a regular basis, and that would come down to San Jacinto River, creating wetlands, marshlands, and environmental areas coming into Canyon Lake, which would stabilize the lake and keep it at an appropriate level, which would help with our water quality, as well as the quality of water that people are going to drink, and increase the amount of water that's available. You know, we're talking about times now where there's water shortages. We can create more drinking water, and I think the government is doing a good job in regulating the pollutants coming down.
Thank you. What would you do to help provide more recreational opportunities for young children and teenagers in the city? Let's start with Randy Bonner.
This is something I've heard both from the city and the POA. We've worked, tried to find a youth center, and we, in fact, I think John, to his credit, opened it up at one time, but for some reason, like three years later, it was closed. The children, they want to do skateboarding. Where do they go? You know, where they go, they go on our streets, and that's dangerous. But so, we've got to find ways to, I mean, we have a lot of amenities. I don't want to lose track of it. I mean, baseball, softball, there's a lot of children that are doing that. And of course, they're using the water, and we have a very excellent golf training every year, and it goes very well. I mean, we had like 150, Sue and I had three of our grandchildren at the golf clinic. So, we're trying, what we do, we do need to do more.
Thank you. Let's go to Mary Creighton.
Most of the things that you're talking about are under the control of the Property Owners Association. They're not under the control of the city. They're behind the gates. But within it, can the city help? You have problems helping financially with giving public money to a private enterprise. So, there's problems in there. We do need some things. We have wonderful amenities for children, as Randy just mentioned. I like the idea, we've talked about it, I mean, the Property Owners Association has talked about having a skate park. That would be a wonderful thing. I think that would be very good for our children. The city itself cannot do. We can support in some ways, but we cannot do a lot about building amenities behind the gates. Within the city, outside the gates, we could if we don't have space to do that. There may be some little space somewhere we could find, but that's not going, that's not our priority right now.
Thank you. John Zeitz.
While I was on the POA board, I established a teen center and a thing called the Youth Action Council. And the action was an acronym for Activities Community Teens Issues Opportunities and Needs. And these kids in the community could get involved in their community, doing various things, a Santa Run, lots of other activities, and then they could go to the teen center. That was in cooperation with the city of Canyon Lake, and that paid for the rental of the facility for the teen center. That closed, and now there's nothing. The advantage that our community has is that the Property Owners Association has a lot of recreational areas for kids. Areas, not as parks and beaches and things. There's no facilities as such for kids. And we need to do something about that. We're just very limited at this point. Canyon Lake has a, the city of Canyon Lake really has a tremendous advantage, because we don't have parks and beaches, and we don't have a lot of committees that are in other cities that cost money. The association takes care of that within our area. But the kids still need our attention, or they can go bad, and we have some problems, and we know where they are, and we still need to take care of them.
Thank you. And Richard Beck.
Thank you. My wife and I have raised five kids in Canyon Lake, and there are a tremendous amount of recreational opportunities already there. And it, again, it's really done through the association. But you know, my kids are involved in water sports, fishing, golf, all kinds of activities like that. The youth are important. I've worked with kids in both, again, with the mock trial program in Riverside County schools and with the youth court, helping kids that had gotten in trouble. But the city itself doesn't have any recreational facilities or anything else, because it's all done through the association.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to our final question now before closing statements. In your opinion, is the city of Canyon Lake practicing good open government? Or can it be better? If it can be better, how? Let's start with Richard Beck.
I think the city can do better with open government. There are, obviously, legal issues have to happen behind closed doors, but I think the culture in government is not to share everything with the public. One of the issues that I've dealt with is just in the rebuilding process of the building that we had burning down. We've had to go through various permitting processes, plot plans, plan checks, building plans, so forth, and not all of that was done openly. We had a number of meetings with all of the property owners that were involved. There was nine properties that were involved. We sat down with meetings with the city, but quite often, there would be communications that, where the city manager would pull staff aside, and they'd communicate outside our presence. So, I don't think it's as open as it could be.
Thank you. Let's go now to Randy Bonner.
Can we do better? Sure, we can always do better. One of the things I found out that, I didn't even know how to spell transparency about three, four years ago, and then I got involved on a public way, and I found out that, for example, at the POA, we opened the major contracts to, so we weren't automatic extending the contracts year after year after year. I found out you can say too much. You get the members, until you've done your homework and you've got a process in place, there's a fine line where, and it's hard to know exactly what, but there's a fine line between what you can say public and what you have to do in a strategy area, executive area, and then make the presentation.
Thank you. Mary Creighton.
Yes, as Randy said, you can always do better with transparency. And talking some about the staff not being so transparent. The council does not control that. And Richard was just telling me this morning about a problem that he had, and I said, "Well, I didn't know that. I don't micromanage the staff and look over their shoulder or every interaction that they're having with people." I said, "Why don't you let me know? I'll take care of it." And that's, I've always been known in Canyon Lake as being very straightforward and honest. I say it like it is, and sometimes inappropriately, but that is how I act. And people just have to call me up. There's rumors get spread, we're the rumor mill of the world. Rumors get spread, and they're not true. I said, "Why don't you just ask me, and I will answer your questions the best..." I said, why don't you just ask me, and I will answer your questions to the best of my ability. If I don't know, I'll find out if I can. So I think the council itself is transparent. Can you do better? Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And John Zeitz.
While I was on the council for eight years, we had one problem, one ethics problem, where a person used their credit card inappropriately. That was taken handled, taken care of. Since I've been off for the last two years, I've counted seven Brown Act violations, two Brown Act violations by one individual, and now up on ethics charges. And so I think what we have is a city that that doesn't listen, doesn't care to listen, doesn't want to listen to the people. One of the things that the city did is spent $100,000 on a redevelopment agency program and then abandoned it because they failed to communicate with the businesses, with the Merchant Owners Association, with everybody, what it was about. The city has an aloofness that we can do what we want to do, when we want to do it and how we want to do it, and you have to listen. And they work for us, and they need to know that. And we need to get back to the the service idea that you are elected to serve the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, candidates now have an opportunity for a one-minute closing statement, and we'll go in reverse ballot order. So let's start with John Zeitz.
One of the things that was talked about earlier is that we can, we need to increase our commercial area and do some things. Randy brought up an area that that he was talking about that could do it in the Furman property, which is landlocked. You cannot access it unless you go through the private community, which opens the gates, or you have to go through the city of Lake Elsinore to get there. And so we do need to look at things, but we have to be relevant when we look at these things and say, this is practical and this is not practical. We do need to bring in some other stuff. I've talked to the Merchant Owners Association people. And a better market, they are looking at it, been trying to do that, getting in. But the way the commercial area is now constructed, it is not feasible for them to put in a larger market because of the parking that's in our area. So a lot of things need to be done, and we need to get there. We need to to have our government work for us, not against us, and I think we can make it if we do all the things that I've talked about earlier.
Thank you. Let's go now to Richard Beck.
Thank you. In all the years I've been in Canyon Lake, I've gotten a lot out of the community. I've developed a lot of wonderful friends. My I met my wife here, raised my kids here, been in business here. Now I want to give back to the community. There's things that I think I can do better than they're being done right now, and I'd like to use my experience and the things I've learned in life and in business to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Bonner.
Well, I've spent too many years in sales, so I'm going to start with a very positive comment that I started. This community is a beautiful community with a lot of wonderful amenities, and we have the lowest crime in in Riverside City. So we have a lot of positive things going in in that direction. I do want to make one comment. I'm bothered a little bit, the comments, some of the comments about the city manager. The city manager, when when we had a three-day that with a lot less people living in Canyon Lake at that time compared to the number of people we're providing service today, the city manager is getting the minimum of of pay compensation in the in the county of Riverside, and I'm not even sure that maybe the California, for the for 30,000 people. I mean, I think the city manager has done a good job. We had experience come from these Marietta, and we were able to find somebody capable like that together. And the final comment, I think we ought to be looking to the future. Let's what I like to say, let's protect our future. I think we got a bright head ahead of us.
Thank you. And Mary Creighton.
Yes. My closing comment is that as when I started, first started to run for the city council, I still have the same goal. Not that I want to make a difference in our city, I want to help it grow and improve. I want to be able to help the individuals in our city when they have problems, and I do that. I love Canyon Lake. It's Randy said, it's a beautiful city. We we have many, many very, very nice amenities. I want to keep it that way, improve it where we can. One of my other goals is coming up, is that we've had some personality problems in the city lately, and I would like, I've been trying very hard to improve that area, and I would like to continue to work on that, raise some civility to the people that are participating in the city. I I can help the city. I have the experience, I have the knowledge. I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn it over now to Nels.
All right, first, we'd like to thank our moderator, Dr. Stacy Cerro Chapin. And like to thank these wonderful candidates. Very good session, very good feedback. Thank you to our audience here in the auditorium at Mount San Jacinto College. Thank you to our audience on PE.com. Just a couple of quick reminders. You can view this forum and the other 24 forums we're doing this week on the road trip area of the politics area of the website on PE.com. We will also, we would like to encourage everyone to vote November 2nd. Please go out and do your civic duty vote. We would like to remind everybody else that on November 2nd, we'll be doing a live election recap show on PE.com, and those events usually trickle in pretty slowly, so we'll also do a show on November 3rd. Thanks also to our staff, to Dave Kaufman and to Louis Amistoy. I'm Nels Jensen. Thank you very much.